Good evening, it is six o'clock. Uh, I call this uh, meeting of our Scotland County Board of Health to order. If we could please get our invocation from Ms. Bean.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight for the opportunity to go about our county's business. Lord, we ask you to, we ask you to look down on us, Lord, and just bless us. And, Lord, guide us to make the right decisions for the people of this county. Lord, again, we thank you for our blessings. We ask you to use this in any way you can to further your kingdom here on this earth. It's in your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Um, everyone should have had the agenda mailed out for them. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
A second. It's been moving properly second. Need a vote on approval of our agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, we will adopt our agenda as distributed. Also, uh, do we have? The minutes from our, uh, previous Board of Health meeting on April thirtieth were also sent out in your packets. Do we have any, uh, question or changes to the April Board of Health meeting minutes?
Motion to accept.
Alright, yes, motion to accept.
Thank you.
It's been moving properly second. We can, uh, all those in favor say aye to approve. Nay? Motion passes, approve our minutes as is, be submitted. Alright, we'll now open up our meeting for public forum. If anyone is present in our public forums, please state name and address in a thirty minute time limit. If there anyone in our public forum. Alright, if no one in our public forums, we will move forward with our program reports, um, and administrative matters. First up, we will have our developmental focus of WIC. Shaquilla Colden, our WIC director.
Good evening, Shaquilla Colden, the WIC director at the Scotland County Health Department. Um, just here to report on the information on the WIC department. Um, the WIC department, the, the program, the program is required to print a number of documents and we have to have access to printers, um, per the federal guidelines and regulations. So, right now, we're hearing that we will have network printers, not desktop printers, possibly, maybe not, not sure what that situation is gonna be, but, it will probably hinder us if we don't have the desktop printers because we have a lot of things that we have to print and give out to the clients on a daily basis. Also, for a lot of other things too, that are not just for the clients, just operational things that I have to do. So, anyway, some examples of those documents are the client missed appointment letters. We send those out daily, um, to the clients. It helps us with our numbers, um, to notify them and let them know that they need to come to their appointments. Um, we have the transfer of certification letters. Those are letters that we give them out to, um, give to the clients to, if they want to go to another state, we have to give them those letters, it's required federally, we have to give it to them. Um, if they're no longer eligible for WIC, we have to print out that letter to let them know they're no longer eligible. Also, their shopping list. Patients' rights and responsibilities, any affidavits, we have to give them that information as well. So, that would be a problem for us if we did not have the printers. Some goals that we have for the WIC office are a translation machine, it's on wheels. Um, it just requires us to move it around the office. It would be easier than trying to call and not being able to get ahold of someone. We can just transfer from one person to another, no problem. You can talk to a person, um, face to face, or you can talk to him on the phone. Either way, it's much easier. Um, we need the MiFi's. Our specific MiFi's are specific to our crossroads program. So, we cannot just use a regular Wi-Fi. Um, so, we have to have those. Um, and then, the mobile unit, we plan to utilize that possibly every other Tuesday to help out with community services for people that do not have access to transportation. And we plan to collaborate with, um, the local grocery stores and other organizations for outreach purposes. Also, again, to help with, um, participation numbers. You can go to the next slide, I don't know. Alright, and then, some good news, um, we were, um, in the, what we call the WIC Chronicles, it's featured across the state of North Carolina. Um, so, there's the pictures, it shows that we were featured in that newsletter, the, uh, Scotland County. What is that, the RV? And, um, we have a program called Milk Mondays, so they wanted to highlight that. That happens every Monday from eleven to one. It's, uh, breastfeeding support. It is for mothers to help them breastfeed and continue to breastfeed if they have any problems. It helps them with that. They help each other, they talk to each other. Um, we also plan to do that in the evening, uh, for mothers that cannot get there in the daytime. And, we plan to do that maybe in the fall, to start that in the fall. And then, um, some other notes I have here, we've had six families. Um, and, we are also proud to report that we now have the breastfeeding peer counselor in the hospital. And she goes there every day for about an hour and a half. And she basically helps out, um, to support moms to continue to breastfeed and to start breastfeeding every day. So, that is my report. Yes, ma'am.
What did I use an app for translation in, if you don't have a translation on WIC?
No, we just have the, uh, a phone translation. It does, we don't use it that often because we can't normally get through. There's a, uh, older lady that comes in with the Spanish families and we can't usually get ahold of her. Yeah. Any other questions?
And how are you printing on there? Do you have a desk?
I have a printer that, yeah.
Internet issue, whatever, with counting?
No.
Do y'all have a desktop?
We have printers that just don't work. Yeah.
Unrelated to the network issue?
Not related to network issue, no.
But the county is working on a contract with UBO. It should take for that issue.
Okay, those are the address.
Can you tell me what MiFi?
Oh, it's a, a portable, a portable internet little machine.
Okay. Like hotspot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could you tell them about the possibility of the WIC supplemental funds that we could be getting?
So, um, it was a program that the USDA, um, put together for, uh, special funds for the WIC program. Whether or not we get it, it's kinda up to them. Um, but I did apply for it, I don't know if we'll get it or not.
What are they for?
They're here and there. You can use it for outreach, you can use it to, um, fund any of the program materials that you need, any type of components to make the program more efficient. But, um, again.
So, we could use it for, if we put with a printer, like printer for MiFi?
Only, we can use it for things to get for the, uh, mobile unit, yes. But for printers, we cannot use it. If the printer has not, uh, if the printer was purchased within the year, then we cannot use it for printers.
No, like if we needed to get a, like, an additional one for you to print on, like, on the mobile unit or something. So, you gotta have, like, a printer for the mobile unit, right?
Yeah, a mobile printer.
Yeah, because if you don't print out all those pa, that paperwork and give it to them at community events, you would need a printer.
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
The, um, the translation, the post paper translation was part of what she put in.
Yes.
Could I ask you a quick question? Uh, utilizing the Health Department mobile unit to provide services throughout the community from outside of the South Carolina? Or that Scotland County Health Department?
The Scotland County.
Okay, just curious since we're so close to the line here. And the printers, just to be clear, are the printers just not working, they're broken, they're non-functional, or?
They're non-functional.
They're non-functional. But we, we can't purchase, we can't purchase, purchase desktop printers?
No, the county is going to something different and we're not, the budget is not allowing us to purchase. And that's more than just the Health Department, that's the only why. Um, I think one of the reasons why our printer, their printers are not working too, is because of the cyber incident. Their long nerve computers are not connected to the printer.
So, when they print now? So, like, if someone comes in and they sign up for WIC and you have to print off all their paperwork and have to sign it all this? Where they getting it from?
So, we have one, two printers, one at the front desk, her printer works. Which she has, I think she has, like, two toners left, which we're not allowed to order right now. And then, um, one other printer that's working, but those are only sort of working. So, now, right now, I've been printing, I've been going to the network printer in another office, another department.
And so, you have to walk to the, you have to walk, yeah, I was like, that's inconvenient. We're trying to encourage people to come in and you want things to be same work. When you're trying to accommodate a community that already has enough hit phones. So, you could put that on your list of trying to see if you can get them a printer that even if it's not one that's gonna be connected to the network, that at least can connect to the laptop they're using. Even just there, to print right there, because that's, not, working in a medical office, that is, that in itself is going to be frustrating. After every client I have to go, and if I can't print out, if we're on a system where I'm assuming that you got, you have one screen, we finish it, you can sign it, but I can't go to the next thing until we finish this page. I'm having to go back and forth multiple times with one client to another office to get papers is.
It's just not very efficient. It's just not very efficient.
But, you know, we're kinda limited of what county is letting us purchase at this time. It's above the Health Department. I put this, this, you know, county manager and.
Is there any way to have the current printers, uh, the current printers and the computers checked out to see if it's a communication issue? Can that not at least be looked at, looked at to see if that can be fixed?
But it's not as simple as you might would think with this new cyber incident that we're still not over yet and, uh, getting anything connected. Uh, we had, fire, I'll give you one example. Um, we had Johnson Control to come in this week to update our fire panel and they had to cut the power, uh, to do that. And when they restarted the power, it threw out the VC three switches. And Tim, bless his heart, has worked this whole week trying to get phones back up that are also hooked through VC three. So, it's very frustrating and it's above what we can do locally. It's not that we're not trying, it's that, it's very difficult.
Yeah, cuz they can't.
Tim finally got up with a, uh, top engineer, bless his heart, he had the phone number, he called the top engineer. And finally, they came out and fixed the phones at like five minutes to five today. But WIC didn't even have phone service this week. Neither did the social workers.
So, when it's VC, this VC three thing, it seemed like a lot of the issues started.
You have more questions, when I get a big amount of court, I'll be happy to answer. I can answer most of that stuff, I just want to try and not put it sitting here for me.
So, if somebody gave you a printer, could you, would, would you be able to install it and hook it up and make it work? No? Okay.
Without going through VC three.
That's.
It took several days and several phone calls and several times of sitting there on hold. And then, they say, well, let me move it up to the next engineer. So, it's very difficult, it's not a simple fix. I think Donna can attest to that with the clinical. Have you gotten your printers connected to the nurse's station?
I figured out how to do it myself.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, thank you.
This is our state.
Good evening. Just a quick, um, thing on kind of what we were just talking about, since we already framed the mind in there. As most of you know, um, after the cyber incident, VC three came in. And before that, we started VC three, they do not have a, they have one local employee that they did pertain from our previous IT staff, but she's just one employee, um, so we do not have one on site except for her and she's for the whole county. So, our times when we had IT before, where we would call them and put in a work order, they would, their time would usually be half a day to a day or quick as they could to get here to fix our stuff. Since the cyber incident, the security issues are, some of us used to have the ability to do some things without IT. For example, myself, if it required an administrative password, I was able to do those functions because I had an administrative password. The IT department trusted me with that IT password, with that password. Now, with VC three, there is no trust in Tim with a password because it's secure. So, we, anytime someone has to download something off their computer, a software, anything off the internet that is a, that web base that they need to use, VC three pops up with an administrative password. And therefore, we have to stop what we're doing and actually call VC three. And we will get them on the phone and usually thirty minutes later, they're giving us, they're, they're taking over our computers. They're, um, making into our computers and typing in the password and then we're allowed to download that software. So, that is the issues that we're having now, is that where I would go through that, which I'm thankful for a little bit cuz I would go to the agency and download stuff with admin password. Now, everyone in the agency is having to call VC three themselves to get stuff downloaded. So, I just wanna kinda give you an idea of, um, what's going on, the issue that we had today. I've had this week, I called, the server went down, I mean, the switch went down yesterday, they couldn't fix it. Today, they couldn't fix it, all of a sudden, I gotta call it last minute. I'll be there today to bring you a new switch, which is gonna cost money. I don't know who's paying for that, um, switch and, and it's installed, he installed it today. So, I just wanna give you an idea of how that works. Anything we download, a scanner, a printer, asks for an administrative password. And we have to pick up the phone and call VC three to get that done, so.
One person.
And it's not always done in thirty minutes.
Yes, it's not always done. I've, I know Christine and her several has been on the phone for three hours with them, trying to get stuff done. My only reason I'm saying that is so you could let other people know that we are not happy with this system and we, we really, it's really hindering us really bad at Health Department. I think up to the point where Amanda talked last meeting about not having access to Microsoft Word, not have access to Microsoft Office. This is really hindering how we're running our Health Department, running our clinics. So, I just wanted to get that out of the way first. Anybody have any questions?
So, are other county agencies going through the same thing, Health Department?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
And just to lay the groundwork, is VC three a third-party company or program?
They are a third-party company.
That is managing the IT needs?
There's managing ITs, uh, the whole county there, out of Columbia South, I think the nearest office they have is Columbia, South Carolina.
And it's one person?
No, ma'am, it's, it's a nationwide company that does IT services. They were providing IT, their administrator changed and then they came in and took over, um, to assist us with that and then the other stuff happened.
Was there any hope that it's gonna be solved? Any hope at all? I mean, it doesn't sound good, I mean, they could shut down people.
I was in a department head meeting this morning with the county manager and other department heads and she could not give us a time frame.
When I put in the ticket for today, I was told, the gentleman said, "I will take me an hour, hour and a half to get somebody there." Which, that's an hour and a half, they're having to drive from Columbia, South Carolina. So, that kinda puts us in a, if something goes, if something catastrophic happens, I don't know what we would do. I mean, and if we were down for hour and a half, two hours, I mean, that's before they can even get here. But, uh, we'll say that, but there are some things, this new system, we're all working with in the whole ca, our whole county, so it's not just us. Um, it's just that sometimes it puts us under a burden of stress when it comes to printers, those kinds of things. Every single thing which we just talked about, we have to call VC three for, so.
And we were told this morning that they're still trying to get the server. I think the server is up, but they have to get the IP addresses approved for the state and that's taking a little while. So, therefore, the agencies like the Health Department and DSS that would need that state IP address approved, it's taking a little longer for us to get access. And I think the Sheriff's Department and, uh, Tax Office, places like that, they're up and running already. But the ones that have to get that special permission, because there's certain firewalls, it takes a little longer.
And just one other point I want to make about what, um, Ms. Colden said. WIC has to have a special MiFi device because the crossroads, the access, the crossroads is a federal website and it requires them to have a MiFi device that has a firewall attached to it. So, it is a designated static IP that is just for that, so they can't just use a regular MiFi device. So, when she said MiFi device, she, meaning it has to be dedicated, um, with a firewall access, so. Okay? Alright, finance time? Yay, right? So, um, so, you're twenty-four. Uh, we should be at ninety-two percent expended. As you can see, as a total Health Department, we are eighty-one point five percent, um, budget. So, we are about ten and a half percent under budget currently. We still have one more month to go, okay? Anybody have any questions?
Are you projecting that we'll finish under budget?
Yes, sir. It's probably gonna be right around that ten percent figure, or around nine or ten percent under budget. Okay?
In general, what's that attributed to?
Generally, that is a ten, a lot of this, this time is, um, due to lapse salary. We've had people who have not filled jobs or we've had jobs have not, we've had a communicable disease nurse job that's been open for, two years, it's been open for a long time. We have a nutritionist position in WIC that's open for several years. We've had several, some positions that have not been filled. Um, we have a environment health physician that's been open for majority of this year. So, lapse salary has a lot to do. Also, there are, when we budget, we budget for the maximum. So, if something happens that we think we're gonna buy this piece of equipment for ten thousand dollars, I might say ten thousand dollars, but in my own, it costs six, seven thousand dollars. You know, we have, we kinda give an estimate, can't really give a true number on everything, so that's why some of the numbers are.
And is the county still on a hiring freeze?
Yes.
So, there's.
It's anticipated that it will go into the next fiscal year.
And spending freeze as well? So, the, the savings can't be spent towards vehicles that we've talked about in the past or these other needs, printers, anything like that?
I think the county, uh, has voted to be vehicle neutral this year with the exception of, uh, ambulance or EMS. They're not putting any vehicle purchases this year.
So, being, as being good stewards of our money, I will say this, uh, this is now probably ten years of being in the Health Department. Our budget is always under budget. Um, that does not mean that I falsely produce, cuz someone asked me that one time. Our projections, you just don't ever know what projections are gonna be. I can't project that half of my salaries are gonna be out, I gotta project that they're gonna be here the whole time. So, it's impossible for me to do that, so, um, and operate in the same way, something might not happen that we thought might would have happened before, so. Okay? So, the next slide will be your revenues. Once again, um, hey, there's eighty-one points, no, I'm on the wrong page. It's front and back. Um, seventy-five point five percent out of ninety-two percent collected. Please remember when it comes to revenues, we are a month behind on revenues side. So, these numbers are, uh, you got another month or so of these to go. Any questions? What I had budgeted to receive in revenue for immunizations has exceeded what I had budgeted. Unfortunately, when it comes to undergiving for the expenses and overbidding for, um, like I said before, whenever the budget meeting, don't spend, it just goes back into their pot, or not. Okay? So, is it ever going to end? But we've got money, which is that five forty-six, and the seven sixteen is going all the way till June, June thirtieth to twenty-five. I can get it out in just a second, May thirty-first to twenty-five. Um, so, that one is still going to be in line. So, what this sheet is telling you is how much money we have left in those grants. That fifty thousand dollars for that five forty-three is gone. So, that is money the state had allocated for the He, Health Department that we did not collect or did not ask for or spend. The other two, the sixty twenty-six, sixty thousand twenty-six and the one oh six oh three four, those will roll over to next year's budget.
And what can you buy with the five forty-six? What can you purchase?
Um, I didn't bring that all with me, but, um, basically, anything COVID related, this is CD related, so basically anything communicable disease. It's basically was sent to us to get communicable disease back under control after COVID because when COVID happened, everybody was doing COVID tests and COVID, well, STDs, HIV, STDs, I said that, CDs, all that stuff kinda went to the wayside. And so, now they had to build back up where we left off and the things that we were doing in COVID. So, this money was here to get us back on track. We do have a part-time HIV case manager that is funded with this money. The director of nursing also helps run, um, this program, so.
And the state consultant has applied twenty thousand dollars of that to go towards a, uh, shelter for the mobile.
So, yes, ma'am, there are limits on how we can, definitely limits on how we can spend it.
So, it shouldn't be a problem to spend the last sixty thousand.
The vaccination program sit a hundred and six, that might be a little more difficult because it has to be certain things related to that for us to purchase. Um, but we have a year to figure out a plan. Any questions? Um, speaking of which, uh, the other piece of paper you have right here, um, we discussed back in February, the possibility of using some of these additional COVID funders in that five forty-three to do some type of fall campaign. A, I don't know what kinda campaign you wanna call it. Flu COVID campaign to, um, help, um, with that, with this additional money. We would use the money before May thirty-first and then we would have a campaign in the fall. So, as you see before you, this is a letter that was sent to the county manager, um, that will show you what it is we requested, okay? We requested two hundred, um, community organization wellness kits. Basically, you can see under there what that in, that entails. Um, that is going to be set aside for two hundred community, uh, organizations, churches, whatever we decided was under there. Spencer, the drip tray that refills, the batteries for it, the work, the gloves spray, just the thing, you can read all that, I don't have to read it for you. But that is the two hundred wellness kits for the community organizations that we were able to purchase. The next part is the wellness care package, which are six hundred of those, those are hand sanitizers, those will make six hundred individual bags. But, um, I think Ms. Bean actually talked about making the individual bags last time when we had this, um, discussion back in February. Just effective spray, wipes, tissues and mask. So, if you look over. On the back, you'll see where the policy is. So, I did wanna let you know, we had, we did receive all this stuff, boxes it was, that was stacked up in Health Department, but it is currently sitting at IEJ in our storage. at IEJ in our storage room. Okay, um, so I didn't want to say that too loud, somebody might-
Those funds, like is it just for any vaccination program, or does it have to be like COVID vaccination program?
This was for COVID. Um, we do have a um, allowable and unallowable cost chart that says what we can use it for. Um, I do know things we cannot use it for. We cannot purchase vehicles, we cannot lease vehicles. Pretty much that funds is strictly related to outreach for immunization for vaccinations.
So what I was thinking was, can you use it for, because we want to use like mobile unit coming up ways. We have, I think it's really used the most, we may forget to get out to the, meet people where they are. So, when it's time for high school vaccination program, when it's time for flu vaccine, can you use those funds?
If we offer the COVID vaccination at that event.
If we offer it, so we can offer it, but if they don't get it.
We can still use it for other.
As long as we offer all of it.
Long as we offer COVID. As long as we offer the COVID vaccine for the kids or for any event, then we can use that money for, for that.
Ask you when you come back, come back with some stuff that they can use for the mobile unit, for vaccine programs that need to be funded.
Okay.
When you know that you're trying to do outreach, so that means when you're trying to be creative, what do we need to have on that mobile unit for people to have access to? What we're gonna do with community events, if they're coming out to IEJ, if they're going out to the Lower Hill Center, what are they need if we're trying to push the vaccine?
Yes ma'am, I can definitely do that. Any other questions? Alright, thank y'all so much.
Hey, everybody. I want to introduce Dr. Rose and Dr. Jonathan Rose, and he is our medical director. He is, who signs all of our standing orders and our practice agreements with our mid-level providers, so. We couldn't do most of the work we do without him, and he's there when we need him, so thank you, Dr. Rose. Um, I'm gonna, just before I talk about that, a little bit about our IT issues with clinic. So, in the nurses' station, we have a longer printer, prints very slow. Anytime we do immunizations, we have to print out um, the NCI or immunization sheet for the patient and other things that have to be printed. So the nurses wanted, they all have their laptops back at this point. So they wanted to be able to connect to the copier machine in the nurses' station, because it goes faster and, and it is actually toward the goal of less desktop printers and using a central printer. So when I contacted VC three, we tried to find out, because we had eight laptops that needed to be connected to that printer. And Christine put the work order in, and ten minutes later, they called and I told him, you know, what we had. I said, but the nurses work in clinic, you know, they're in and out, they don't really, because this is the way VC three works. If they get a work order, they'll call, which is, is, you know, you have to do cold calls, but they call on the weekends, they call after five and leave messages that they're calling to work on our equipment. So first of all, I don't even really think they understand what hours we have to begin with. And it's very difficult when they, he calls and he says, so what's going on? I said, I told him what was happening. I said, I'd be, it'd be really nice if the person that's local could come by and just do them while we're in clinic, you know, as the nurses come available. Because when you call VC three, you're on the phone, or either they escalate it to someone else, and then you're on the phone with them explaining that again. And he said, well, do you have access to one of the computers? I said, well, I'm actually at my desk and I am still working on a little bitty laptop. I don't even have a computer screen that I can see things, it's this big. Um, but I told him, I said, the nurses are in clinic, so it's gonna be hard for me to get my hands on that laptop, on one of the laptops. And he said, well, I can tell you, it'll be weeks before we can come and do anything, because the Kalin's over at the sheriff's department working. I said, alright, I said, um, so Amanda intervened a little bit, and I had emailed April a couple of times about it. Basically, I was told that I need to be more flexible in these situations, um, that uh, I wasn't really cooperative with the IT person when he called. And I said, well, that's fine, if that's what somebody thinks, but we can't, the nurses are not available all the time. They're in with patients, they're coming and they're going, and so you can't know where they're gonna be. So give us a schedule, if you want to do it remotely, and tell us when this nurse can get on the schedule and who to call. And it needs to be the same person, because every time you call, you get a different person who has to learn the whole process over again. Anyway, IT did reach out to me again by email, but what I found out in the interim is our copier machine has been taken off the inner, off the system. So with my little longer computer that I'm still working on, I said, I'm just gonna see if I can install it. So I did, and it worked, and I can print from my laptop. And because it's not in the network necessarily, I was able to connect some of the nurses that really needed access to be able to print fast and be able to get stuff to the patients. So it is, it's a challenge every day. Um, if I were any more flexible, I'd probably be bending over backward and snapped into by now. Um, but it, it's, it's hard trying to work in an, an atmosphere where, I mean, we have policies coming up. Clinical has hundreds of standing orders and policies. All those are still on the server. We can't get to them to even, you know, monthly, like, I mean, hundreds, literally hundreds. And we're gonna have to retype all those, if we can't get to electronic copies of. And again, our desktops, I have a desktop, that's why I'm still working on a little bitty tiny laptop. And you can't even pull up two pages next to each other and see everything, that's how bad it is. So, I know that everybody needs something in this IT poor climate we're in right now, but it seems like they need to have more people on site doing things instead of just having one person trying to cover the whole county. So, that's my soapbox on the IT issues, and uh, we, we, we have adapted well, I think, and we have been very patient. And I know you can't do what you can't do, but we're really looking forward to having access to all our documents again, so we don't have to recreate the wheel when they're sitting on the server. And uh, accreditation's around the corner, we got all sorts of things in there for that, anyway, that's. Um, any questions about that, before I give my little update on clinical?
Is there any reason why there's only one, one representative from that company in the county when all the county agencies went down?
I don't know, because when I talked to the guy this last time, he said there's like thousands of their IT people out there. And because I said, can we just, maybe, maybe have a couple of people who really know what our building does and what, how we work to, to, so we, we know who to call and they're savvy to what we need and what our functions are, because we're completely different than the sheriff's department, and even so much from DSS. Everybody does something different, and none of the people that are, none of the IT people seem to understand anything, and they have to be educated every time you call with a, with an IT issue, so.
Mrs. Dever, is there anything that we can do as the board of health to help or to voice any more frustration on this? I'm, I'm sure there's plenty of vocal folks here, and you've been in meetings sharing that, but is there anything we can do as a board to help nudge anything?
Know of anything, uh, like Donna said, I intervened and went to the county manager and said, look, you know, why can't they work with us and send somebody out, seeing our nurses are tied up in clinic? And like she said, we were told to be more flexible and to look at the remote end option. About one person, they said, was at the sheriff's office, and that they did have another team of three people that were here cleaning laptops and desktops to get ready to go back on the server. And that they didn't feel that it would be a priority to pull them off the big, big picture project and that we need to be more flexible.
I mean, obviously, there are issues, I mean, there are major issues here. I mean, the, the department's not functioning well at all.
No.
That's just the craziest thing I've ever heard.
It's been December.
Yeah, December, end of December.
So, is it possible that it's maybe me and he has it?
I mean, but when you talk about it, it's absurd. I mean, it's absurd, it's almost laughable, that this is going on in this, in this county. It's just, it's just the most absurd thing I've ever heard for a county agency.
So, is it possible, can you please schedule a meeting so that we can have at least our board's engineer, me as, with April, yes? And with whoever in IT that may be able to answer the questions that we have? So who in the county can tell me why we have VC three and why is the only one person working here?
County manager.
County manager.
That's it? Then that's the person you need to call?
I mean, I, I have a nurse who's working on a computer from the nurse that resigned, the laptop. And every time, you gotta remember now, every time we switch, we have to have our, they won't let us use a generic password, which in some levels makes- but if your nurses have to share a laptop, they're gonna have to share passwords. Erica, my lab manager, to be clear, and we're trying to get all the stuff done for the, the mobile unit, make sure we're clear. Clear approved for the mobile unit to do labs offsite, she doesn't even have a computer at her desk. She has no computer to use, and we don't even have a longer to give her. Um, she's, they have a couple in the lab, but that's a very busy space. She can't concentrate and write policies and do things without a laptop in her, or something in her office to work on.
So what happens if there's a massive county emergency? What happens if there's a massive county emergency here? What happens?
I mean, really, what- IT wise, we're, we're disabled, but, you know, luckily, we've got some people who know how to work without computers too, so we have to adapt, we're used to it.
Is that because it's a, is that because it's an exception in their contract? And they need approval for additional funds to perform that task?
My question is, is this all in down to how much it costs to, or the level of support with VC three? But I know you didn't know those answers, so that's why we just need to-
So may, maybe a better question is, how is DSS working?
The same way we are, limited.
That we are.
Very limited. They have, I can use, I'll use my husband.
There's, there's no way to get help from, from a state agency for, um, I mean, look, you've got, you've got Medicaid issues over there, you've got major issues in the health department, that just absolutely makes no sense.
Well, they loaned us computers, but that's not as far as- It's not seen, and they're still trying to get-
They're just not up on the list of importance to get the service up, like, so you still can't get to all of your protocols and-
Documents and-
And documents that you have to have from the state, because they're only-
So the health department is just not a priority at this point? The health department is not a priority?
So when is accreditation?
Public safety was more of a priority, so the sheriff's department and-
So when is accreditation? When is that coming?
Twenty twenty-five. Next year, but you know, it's-
And you're supposed to be working on it every day.
Right.
Of every year.
And when does accreditation come up?
Twenty-five, next year.
Are they gonna make an exception or do an extension for that? I mean, you may wind it with the health department that's not accredited, y'all.
Right, it can, it can-
That's a major problem.
It can snowball into other issues.
And in clinical, the one saving grace is that we've always, we keep manuals of all our hard copies. We scan them onto the server, but we do have hard copies. And when I do all my policies, I always, I do a Word document, update, revise it, whatever I need to do, I print it for Dr. Rosen, Amanda, whoever needs to sign it. Um, then I scan it into the server, then it goes into the manual. So we have hard copies, but again, that's sitting there typing through the whole policy, every single one of them, if we can't get to the electronic version that we cannot.
But the longer it takes you to get back to normal, means it's just gonna take that much more effort to get back up to speed. Rescannings, updating what you've done in offline period of now six months.
Yeah.
So, it's a challenge.
Our, the gatekeeper, where we need to go is to talk with our county manager. So can we get a date and you email the board and all of us and invite, when we need to get there? Because I think maybe she needs to hear from us who are particularly experienced in this area, because I will say I've talked with her once. Found a little bit of progress on the name, but um, I think we're gonna, we just need to make, make sure that's her, because I know, that's why I was asking, like, when we, when we out with, and when you have Medicaid, and we know most of our patients in this county are Medicaid. But now they, it's take, it's gonna take what, thirty, forty-five minutes to do a week appointment? They not waiting thirty, forty-five minutes, they ride out waiting thirty, forty-five minutes.
He said?
That's, we're now asking underlisted things, and we're supposed to be here to serve so you can put that on as a major to be done, not for our next meeting, but like in the next couple.
So on behalf of the board, I would like to say, we thank you for what you're doing, and we know you're struggling, and we appreciate, we appreciate that. We appreciate that a lot.
Okay, um, clinical updates, um, we had a PHM one, she resigned in um, May. Now, this position's frozen. Traditionally, it's been a much easier task to hire PHM one. PHM ones do a lot of the clinical workflow wise. And the communicable disease nurse position that's been open for two years is not frozen, and we can't hire for. I would really like to switch, uh, is there a opportunity of unfreezing? And then, I don't mind freezing, I'm doing part of the CD nurse job, that's okay. But we need nurses in clinic, because we're down two nurses now, and that one's frozen, and we can't hire for the other one. I'd really like it if we could switch those around. I'd rather freeze the CD position and open up the PHM one, maybe we can hire another nurse through that. Or maybe we check on and see.
I had with the county manager, when she froze that position, she said, in looking at the agreement addendum, it said we had to have two designated CD nurses. So if you're wanting to take on that responsibility, I can go back to the county manager.
Well, we have three CD nurses, that you have to be trained and oriented with a communicable disease state consultant. So me, Paige, and Elisa's actually had that training, and so we've got the, not a STD nurse, it's just a CD nurse.
She's more centered towards family planning, so.
Yeah, but she is considered a CD nurse when I do reports, she's, because she's been trained. But there's two, me and Paige. Now, if one of us left, you know, you look and, because Elisa really, you know, she's there and she does some of it if she has to, but Paige and I typically are the ones carrying the load for that. So, um-
But I, you know, I can't guarantee that she'll unfreeze it, I mean, this is coming from the commissioners, but I'll be happy to share it with you.
And we're trying, Ashley and Paige have taken two medical Spanish courses now, so we're trying to get someone in the building that's on staff that has some sort of Spanish basic knowledge. Um, because we have had some challenges with our interpreter and um, we use the language line, which can be a little clunky at times when you're dealing with phones and patients, and so I just, we are trying to get, get them trained so they can understand some basic stuff. That helps a little bit. We did an annual wellness clinic for the county, and we did eighty-nine employees. And that was done over two days, so that was, I thought we did well with that, and we had a good turnout, I think. And uh, that's about all I have as far as clinical updates. Did you put that picture in? Yeah, show them that picture. I do want to give a shout out to uh, to our maternal child health staff and our social workers in WIC. Um, we collaborate every year on the pregnancy fair with Scotland Healthcare System, and that's some of the pictures from the pregnancy fair, and we bring, we bring big prizes, it's bought with some of our funds and the patients, I think Joy got up and did a, um, she's our child health nurse, she got up and talked to the group. And so it was, it was a good time, and I think Scotland was Scotland Health- And I think Scotland was, Scotland Health Department was out there and we were showing off a little bit, so I'm proud of them. They did good. That's all I've got.
Good evening. I'm so glad I can grace y'all with my presence tonight. Um, I'm Valentin Ox and I'm Environmental Health Supervisor for Environmental Health and Animal Control. Um, just a couple of updates, don't have many. Um, some of the things that we've been kinda dealing with in the county and kinda being successful with is that we implemented a new procedure with our events last October, September, October. That has really moved in great strides. We were having a lot of, um, incidents where we would show up at events where they didn't have things that they needed to have on their checklist. And we would have to wait till they go and purchased it. So we, uh, we kinda looked at other counties and pulled applications and kinda implemented our own. And it kinda gives more of a, a timeframe. So coordinators get their stuff in thirty days. Vendors get their stuff in fifteen days and we're able to communicate and kinda answer any questions that they may have. So that when we do get to the event, they're ready. They're ready to start prepping, they're ready to start cooking and selling. So that has been really good. We've had a couple of, um, events in the county to where it's went smoothly and we're so excited about that. We also have had great growth in Scotland County with the new establishments that are coming. Um, we've had three so far, um, that we've opened. I think one of the most questions that I get is when Highway fifty-five is gonna open? Um, so there was some, there was an incident with them, with them being able to receive their equipment. And, uh, I reached out to them last week because of course I won't be here too much longer because I'll be on maternity leave. And they are hoping to be open by the end of the month. So that will be good. We also have like four independent, we call them mom and pop type places. It's places that doesn't have to be submitted to the state. Um, that are projected to open maybe in the next six months. So they're currently turned in plan reviews or, um, they're still waiting to get some specifications on equipment and stuff like that. So please know that there's a process when it comes to opening up a new establishment. Uh, I think some of the complaints that we've got here recently is I'm waiting on the health department. We work very closely with building inspection and the fire marshal when it comes to opening up a new establishment. Because first of all, safety is priority. And then we wanna make sure that they have everything that meets the rules to be able to become an establishment. So franchise and chain restaurants are submitted to the state. There's a two hundred and fifty dollar charge that they do, they process, uh, with their application and they submit their specifications on equipment, their menu, things like that. When it comes to a local independent restaurant, we do the same here. There's an application, there's two hundred and fifty dollar charge. We ask for a detailed menu. We need specifications of equipment so that it meets the rules. So they allow thirty days. We would like to implement thirty days, but we usually have it done in two weeks. Um, unless, you know, they're missing something or, you know, there's a hiccup. If you get any complaints, um, I'll be happy to, uh, reference you, Ms. Harley. She'll be taking over as far as, uh, food and lodging. Why I'm out, uh, I've, I've given her the go that if she needs me, she can contact me as well to ask me any questions. But, um, Ms. Amanda has become very knowledgeable in environmental health because we've had some, we've had, uh, some hiccups. Um, another thing that we have been working closely with the state is the state was granted a, um, a big grant for, um, a specialized person to go into schools and childcare and test for asbestos. So they're in the process of doing that. Luckily, we have not had anything pop up positive within our schools, which most of our schools are kinda newer. Except with the exception of maybe three, three or four, I would think. Um, but we have had an increase in lead investigations over the period of one year. And, um, I am the person that is authorized and led at this moment. Ms. Harley will be attending the S O P in the fall. To where we work with the state regional when we go out, when there's an elevated blood level or there is a confirmed blood level. We go out and do the assessments of the home to see where the child is getting it. And what we can do in order to remediate that process so that we have, uh, looks. Other than that, um, our animal control officers are working very closely with the Humane Society. And, uh, we get emails all the time about what they can bring in, what they can't bring in, and we're just following along with that process. And that's my department update. Any questions?
Do you have any other, like, input about from the animal control, Humane Society as far as?
With the, the county manager, myself and the Humane Society Shelter Manager met to talk about the contract. Um, their board was not happy with some of the verbiage, but our lawyers were gonna leave that verbiage in. And so she's supposed to take it back to her board and discuss that with them. Part of the verbiage they were not happy with is if we don't have space, then the county's not gonna pay them for the days we don't have space. Because we may. And so as Val said, we get emails, okay, you can bring dogs, but you can't bring cats. Or you can bring cats, but you can't bring dogs. So we only have one kennel left. But on the days that they have no availability, I'm keeping track of that and giving that data to the county manager. And instead of cutting the check yearly, it's gonna be cut quarterly and it will be deducted out.
How long have you been tracking?
Uh, about three months.
How many days of full have you logged in those three months roughly?
More than half.
And whenever they look into how they just found me, the commission thinks thought about or what other option they have.
But what we have done is contacted some of the veterinarians, local veterinarians to see if we needed to take in an animal. Could we pay them boarding costs? Or those days that the shelter's not available?
And I think some of the complaints that we recently got is, um, if an individual picks up a dog on the side of the road and they don't wanna keep it, you know, they'll call the shelter and they'll say, well, this dog, they're not taking any surrenders right now. So then if they don't have the space, we can't take it in either. So then the public's getting mad because they're like, okay, what will we do? And we have no answer at this point. So they'll take it and leave it back on the side of the road, take ownership.
And a lot of the public don't realize, I don't think they've made the connection that the health department and the Humane Society is two different things. They're private. Um, so when the Humane Society says no, they come to the health department and says, I need animal control to take this dog that I just picked up the side of the road. The Humane Society just told you they couldn't take it. We don't keep dogs here.
Right.
You know, it causes a, that issue with the citizens.
Is there any availability in counties? Do, I mean, has anybody ever asked what their capacity is or do they have?
I have asked in the other counties that are having some of the same issues as we have. I think Richmond County actually put out a bid for, um, a gift card vendor for this year, because their vendor from last year didn't want that, so. So Roundy County, Lick County, they're having some same issues as well. And then when you look just a line in Marlborough County, uh, they're calling this shelter to see if they have any openings. But in the meeting that we did have, where we're talking about ways that could reduce the overcrowding would be when the animal patrol officer goes out and picks up an animal. If they know who the owner is and the owner then they don't have to hold them for seventy-two hours. Um, but if they don't sign the owner surrender, they've got to hold it to see if the owner's gonna want the dog back or, um, or not. So if they go ahead and sign the owner surrender, it reduces the amount of time that Humane Society has to hold the dog. I mean, they can't put it up for adoption or euthanize it or anything during that seventy-two hours if the owner does not sign the owner surrender. So Val and I have encouraged the animal control guys, if they know who the owner is, to talk with them. Educate them.
Yeah.
But then again, you know, you find several side of the road, you don't know who the owner is, if it doesn't have a tag or if it's not Marburg chip.
That's right. Any other questions?
No, no more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sharon Al Felicia. I am your H R administrator at Scotland County Health Department. Um, this evening I will be presenting the H R update. Um, so for April and May, if you would take a look at the turnover rate for April. Um, we didn't have, um, a turnover rate for April. Um, we also didn't have any number of new hires. However, um, as Donna mentioned earlier, we did have one employee that separated employment with Scotland County Health Department, which resulted in a two point four percent turnover rate. Current open positions, uh, we have a community health worker, which is a time limited position. Um, the closing date's June nineteenth. Uh, we also have, uh, the public health. Earlier, um, that is an enhanced role position and it closes on July the ninth. Um, also, we have some frozen positions, uh, the public health nurse one, which closed, which was frozen in May. And we also have a nutritionist two position, um, that was frozen in March. Um, looking at our closed positions, um, we currently are interviewing for an environmental health specialist uh, position. We have identified one qualified candidate, which is great news. Um, and that is, that interview, we're pending a second interview with this candidate as well.
What does closing date mean? Does that mean you need to repost or we can't search after that date?
So we have a certain amount of time that when, once we post a position, is how many days that it stays open. And the closing day is when it actually closes. It actually closes at eleven fifty-nine P M on that date.
And you can relist the June twentieth?
Yes, we don't.
If you don't feel it.
Yes, if we don't feel it, um, then I'll have a conversation with that hiring manager and the health director. Based on the, um, quality of candidates, um, that determines whether or not we're gonna repost or look at other avenues for recruiting. Uh, to some good news, um, we did a employee morale survey back in January. Um, and the senior management team went back to the joint board. Um, we looked at one key question. Um, do you feel recognized and appreciated for your contributions? This survey was sent out to current, well, then staff. And we had twenty-four participants that gave us some feedback. Based on this specific question, um, we went back and revamped the employee of the month program. Now, the employee of the month program, it is purpose of it is to appreciate employee achievements and motivate continued high performance. So we're looking at a goal to increase employee morale by five percent mid twenty twenty-five. Um, eligible, our regular full-time and part-time employees with a limit. There, well, there's a limit with, um, I'm sorry, uh, eligibility, our regular full-time and part-time employees. Um, the employee of the month will be designated for a calendar year. Our nominations will be submitted to H R between the first and twentieth of each month. Um, the selection team, but the selection process, the senior management team will review nominations and select the employee of the month. And that lucky employee will be announced at the first staff meeting of the following month. Uh, selection criteria, job performance, teamwork, innovation and adherence to company values. Um, and of course, that lucky, um, individual will receive a gift card, a monetary gift card. Um, and they'll be featured on our employee wall of fame. Um, and they'll also be considered for annual employee of the year award, which is, which will be given in the, uh, in January of each year. That concludes my H R update. Are there any questions? Thank y'all.
For my health directors report, we went over a lot of things just by being given their reports, but there was a few things I wanted to touch on. Um, we have gathered a mobile unit team to plan and collaborate. Uh, ideas and community outreach of where we'd like to take the unit. Uh, some of the things that we talked about was, um, Wakeville Community Center, Gibson Park, Laurhill Community Center, A E Johnson. Maybe like this month, the clinical would go out. I think it was Thursday, we decided. We is the, we is the, no, that's it, family planning. Anyway, we're working on the date, but every other week they would be at one of those sites to provide services. And on the weeks that the clinic is not providing services, the weeks gonna be providing services at those spots. Um, the only glitch right now that we have is we're waiting on our dump station. And I said earlier about the twenty thousand dollars for the shelter. Um, initially, when it was brought up with the county manager. Um, nine one one, not nine one one, the E O C also has a trailer. So they were gonna split the cost if we paid for the shelter. They were gonna pay for the gravel, the censer and the electrical and dump station. But then with all the budget restraints right now, they may not have the funding for that. So I'm working with the county manager now to see what we're gonna do. Because if you go out to do S T D screenings, then of course, the patients are gonna be using the restroom. And you gotta have somewhere to dump the tank. So I'm working with her on that. If the county does not, um, have the funding for it, I thought about looking at the city and asking them if we pay them a fee or whatever to dump. But that's our only holdback right now is, uh, it's where to dump the, the tanks. Um, Family Planning Clinic, we have met with Saint Andrews for that partnership. And every Wednesday, uh, starting in the fall. Family Planning Clinic will be at Saint Andrews. Uh, they have a room for us. We've gotta provide a table and our equipment and stuff. We're trying to work out the logistics on taking it out in the mobile unit and not storing it there because of safety, uh, reasons. Um, the community health worker that. That would be working in with the Family Planning Clinic to help promote that to the students. And we're shooting for a day of September eleventh to roll that Family Planning Clinic out at, at Saint Andrews. But that would also include, um, S T. Um, you probably noticed in your packets, I have put in there for the Milk Mondays that Siquana spoke of. And Jana's Family Night Program is really growing. Um, so that was the updated schedule on the cards. We are still working on the D I B T smart. We had state program staff come, uh, down and train us on the software that we'll have to use to enter all that into the computer. So we're still receiving the trainings and getting our, uh, C U's uploaded. Trillium, as far as strategic plan goal four, continue to support and promote community-wide health services. Trillium held a town hall here. Trillium held a town hall here um, this month and Jana and Kathy both attended uh, to learn more about the resources that they offer. Uh, as Donna said, the employee wellness clinic, we held it back in May. Along with that, we gave out surveys to the county employees. Would you come to the Health Department if we had a wellness clinic? Um, and ninety-seven percent of the people that responded said most definitely they would. The only downside to that right now that we're all trying to work out is the county has low cost, low shield insurance and we're having trouble getting provisioned through them for that particular service. Um, Sharon talked about the frozen positions and we've been kinda trying to think outside of the box. What could we do? Because the county manager did say that you can contract out and the money is in. The Health Department is unique in the fact that a lot of our physicians are funded through grants and addendums, not just through county. So if it is a physician that is funded, uh, I'll give you for an example, one that we're currently doing. They keep bringing up the nutrition position. It's been open for two years, but they forgot to mention that we have contracted with Nutrition Plus. So that position is technically filled, it's just not filled with a county employee. It's filled by using contract through Nutrition Plus. So uh, Sharon and I and even Tim, we have been trying to think outside of the box. And Emerges and the Public Health Alliance also contract to where we wouldn't be responsible for the fringe part. Um, and so we're trying to think outside of the box of way of hiring people, even though you disagree. So we are working on that. And that's all I have.
Any unfinished business?
I will speak to this in a second. Um, I won't make that slip, Valentine, to come back up here. Um, so the unfinished business, we did talk about the environmental health fees. Um, and you did go, you did give me some information to go back and get. Um, I, I will apologize and say that I have not had the time during budget time and other things to actually go through and do those audits yet, um, that you, that you asked me to do about those fees. So I will get to that as soon as I can. My plan is to go out with either Val, well, Valentine is not gonna be here, to go out with um, Cedric or Harley to kinda see what they do so I can get an idea of how many trips it takes to do these things. And I'll have the information back for you um, at next meeting, if that's the pleasure of the board. Do you have any questions? Have you asked Valentina about that while she's here? Since she was not here last time? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And Valentina.
And um, now, uh, new business. We also had some current policies that were provided in the packets that uh, we need to discuss and review. The first one would be the border health adjudication policy.
Any regulations or changes in past year?
There's no changes from last year, so any discussion of these policies. And uh, motion to the border health adjudication policy, ask for them.
Except.
Second.
All of the papers are expected for the border health adjudication policy, ask for them. Say I. Oppose. Policy. The next policy will be uh, the strategic planning policy. Any changes? This one? Uh, Sharon. I would need to have a policy. The policy also would belong in this with a front and a back.
So um, with previous versions of the strategic plan, the S M T team decided to add or incorporate HR initiatives. So the HR initiative, the HR initiative information was added to the policy. Um, in question through, in, under the, the procedure section, number three. And also in number one, it mentions about um, the analysis of recruitment and retention data.
Except.
Say that three times fast.
Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.